Okay, good evening and welcome to the May 22 meeting of the school committee. I'll call this meeting to order at 7 o'clock. This meeting is being both audio and videotaped by LCAT. Is anyone doing either of these? During none, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call starting to my left. Gregory Thompson.
Adrian New.
Rich Fuchero.
Bill Fonseca.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Elizabeth Marcy and Boucher.
Pamela Blair, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Kathy Sullary, Recording Secretary.
Okay, moving along to item two, approval of minutes. Item 2.1, approval of the May 8, 2017 regular session meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the May 8, 2017 regular session meeting minutes.
There's a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that? During none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Nice job in the dialogue, Ms. Sullary.
Yes.
Get them all down there.
Thank you.
2.2, approval of the April 11, 2017 meeting with the town council. And the pertinent pages here are pages nine through 11. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the Tuesday, April 11, 2017 minute meetings from the joint session with the town council. Pages nine through 17?
Nine through 11.
Nine through 11, sorry.
There's a second.
Second.
Any further discussion on those?
I'll be abstaining since I wasn't there just now.
During none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention. Thank you. That motion carries. Committee and subcommittee communications. Greg.
I will set the scene, thank you.
Teacher.
I'm fine too, thank you.
Rich.
Fine also, just went to a couple games, that's it.
Well, I went to visit the Makerspace the other day because John Viedersheim was there with students from the third grade working on projects. They created their own playground and then they came in and they were designing it. And they had to make it safe, so they were all putting the puffy stuff down and then like the turf on top of it. It was kind of neat.
Is that Mr. Axelrod or?
I think, maybe it was Mr. Axelrod, I'm sorry. Yeah, it was Mr. Axelrod, I'm sorry. And then so, they were having a good time doing it and they, so they really enjoy it because of course their proximity makes it easier for them to get there. And I also went to the play at Burj Lom, which was just hilarious. The kids did a really good job with that. And that's really about it. Met with Lily Ross, they got a 50th birthday party coming up and events are going to start this summer and go through the fall.
Just a quick reminder that the town council will be holding their budget hearing tomorrow night at 7 o'clock as part of their regular meeting. Moving along to item four, opportunity for visitors to address the committee. Seeing none, we will move right into item five, superintendent's presentations. Item 5.1.1, staff recognition reminder.
Simply a reminder to all of you that on June 8, I think starting at 3 o'clock, we have our staff recognition assembly, which both recognizes staff members when they've reached a certain level of years of service to ELHS and also recognizes our retirees for this year.
Long list, it's really impressive.
Very impressive list this year.
We talked about 40 years, imagine that.
Whoa.
That's amazing.
Wow.
She may not have wanted that.
When was the last time I said it?
Was it?
She's not retiring.
She's not retiring.
Oh, just the recognition.
She's going to recognize for 40 years of service. Yemi.
Big old recognition.
I'm sorry, it's Quentin Northampton.
Oh, that's okay. All right. Yeah, let's take a moment here and we'll circle back. Yemi, if you'd join us in the center, please. See that? You gotta get right on board here, right on the stage.
Yeah, no, don't sit down.
Yes. You gotta dance, you're prepared, right? We're gonna come around to you.
What is this?
Stand over here. Yemi, first of all.
Come on over here. Come on, we don't bite.
I'd like to present you with this plaque as a little memento for serving this year with you, with us, and we really enjoyed you.
Thank you.
Your contributions and we look, you know, best of luck in the future. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yemi, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yemi, what is your future?
Um, I dream of biological sciences, pre-med at U of Chicago.
Fantastic.
Fantastic.
Yes, it is.
I'm going to live vicariously through you.
Go for organic chemistry, that's the trick.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, moving along to item 5.1.2, Meadowbrook student handbook revisions.
Okay, in your package you should have a memo addressed to the school committee from Principal Bacon at Meadowbrook and then a copy of their proposed handbook. And just to walk you through the changes they've made. The first change is on page four where they've added the school mantra. Hand in hand with kindness we can, dream, persevere, and grow. Then they move into some changes on page five regarding volunteers. Specifically the bullet points. I can read through each one if you'd like.
No, but the first one, does that mean like, if I'm volunteering at the school, I can't, is that what it means that they cannot bring another child, they can't bring another child?
They can't bring like the two-year-old with them.
Right. Yeah, they can't bring the two-year-old with them. Okay, that's okay, thank you, boss. Okay?
So there goes the other volunteer.
I think they still have volunteers.
Yeah, I think so.
They have wonderful volunteers at Meadowbrook, I'm just kidding.
Then the next change moves to page eight, I believe, where they changed the pick-up and drop-off. That was something that we actually revised this year and it seems to really work, so now we're making it permanent in the handbook.
It's a.
That makes a lot of sense, too.
Porter Road though, it says Porter Street. That's my.
Yep.
Oh, it's my street, so.
Yep, let me make sure. Okay. And then the next one is on page 10. And this is specifically around messages when a child is absent and the Meadowbrook office has not received any type of phone call. They just want to make sure parents know that they will be calling consistently until they receive that.
I really would like to know if this is, if I'm a parent, I think I'd like to know if there was a time when this phone call is going to be made. I wish the administration would say they answer that question.
I could have sworn there was always a time because I thought you had to call it by like 9 or 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
And then what time do we call back if you have a call?
They call back by like 10:30, 11:00.
Does it say that, though?
Yeah, I could have sworn that has been in the handbook. That's why I was curious, I was wondering why this was in here.
Sure.
And just a few years ago, we go through the whole phone call because they have the new law to have to have all that documentation.
That was actually code of conduct.
Code of conduct.
And then they call you at 2, 3 o'clock after school's out. I mean.
No, generally they call in the morning.
Well, I think that should be specified, if that's possible.
It comes home on a sheet, if I recall. Like, you know, when you get a thousand sheets in the first place.
Well, it's probably, then it would come out in code of conduct. Call in by a certain time.
Yeah, and it was always before like 11, 11:30 like that, but still, it's good to know.
It should be in here.
But that is good.
Okay, and then the last change is on page 12. And basically with the additional math academic coach, they're including in their discussion and description of intervention in reading and math, they're now putting in the math part of that throughout that paragraph. And those are the changes. Would you like us to make the revisions first and bring it back?
No, are you worried about the time?
Let's make it a definite, that they specify the time.
Yeah, we can, with the change.
Well, there are just a few. I was going to say, do you accept the revisions and the minor changes that were presented tonight?
Yeah, exactly.
We all know what the change is because we don't have the time.
Yeah, but I think we're. I know that they make the calls in the morning, I don't know the specific time.
It doesn't have to be, you know, by one, it doesn't have to be exact, but that's all. I think we can make, accept the handbook with that provision.
It's tiered intervention in reading, should that be the font?
Tiered intervention in reading.
Should be the same as the ones above and below. I mean, that's just not a big deal, but.
Style of?
Yes.
Font style should be the same?
Yes, please.
Got it.
So is everybody good with approving this with the changes, with the recommended changes?
Well, it's just the one change, right? Well, not changing the time part or the changes.
Well, you had your street.
Yeah, that's the one. We're not adding the time.
And making sure that they add the time.
Okay, we're gonna just let them pick the time.
Yeah.
But are we okay approving this with those?
Yeah, sure.
Absolutely.
I'll move that we accept the Meadowbrook student handbook revisions, year 2017, 2018, including amending to Porter Road and also including the specific time that the calls will be made for absent students.
There's a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? During none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Okay. Moving right along to item seven, new business. Item 7.1, National Night Out request.
Okay, in your packet you have a letter addressed to me that outlines the National Night Out program that takes place on the first Tuesday in August, which this year actually lands on August 1st. Letter is written by our LCAT Director, Mr. Mackey, who is with us right now filming. And the request is on behalf of the National Night Out Committee and certainly the Chief of Police, Chief DeLassio.
I make a motion to approve the request for the National Night Out, the use of ELHS parking lot and fields for the date of August 1, 2017, beginning at, is it noon time?
Yeah.
Noon time through 9:00 PM.
There's a second.
Do we open the school up for that? No?
The school's open during the day, but generally we don't have the school open for National Night Out.
Anything else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item 7.2, request from MIA to host lacrosse playoffs.
Just a final order, actually?
I'm sorry.
Just a question. Should we discuss the proposed athletic rental rates before talking about?
This goes in the fact sheet first.
It goes in, yeah.
It'll be after that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Never mind, no problem. Request from the MIA to host lacrosse playoffs.
Okay, so our athletic director has been contacted by the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association to see if we would be able to host lacrosse playoffs. And I think actually, noting the dates, it could happen on June 8, 9, or 10, which either one of those, any of those nights, Mr. McGee said we could actually host a game, a tournament game. It could be actually the Western Mass, Central Mass playoff, which would be a pretty good game to host. And the MIA was very impressed with how we hosted the soccer playoffs in the fall and are asking us to do it again. They are asking us as an MIA member facility to waive the rental fee.
That's so.
Well, we did do it before.
That's their standard operating.
The biggest benefit for hosting is one, obviously getting your stadium out there as a potential site, but the second benefit is really to our boosters.
There's keys, there's a key machine. Every day it gets.
MIA will.
But the concessions.
Yeah, concessions will go back to the boosters if they run the.
Which boosters?
In this case, it'll probably be lacrosse because it was soccer in the fall.
Specifically to the sport.
Right.
I need to hear. Tell us, tell us, Mr. Fuchero.
No, I had the same idea when I had before, I don't like it. I don't like it.
For what reason?
I just think, other than the boosters, which I really like, but I, we're not getting anything from this at all. I often guess something happens. I just feel, you know, you have other fans there and, same thing I said at the back of the soccer, that's all. Just.
Well, how did it work out in the soccer at the end?
It worked out really well.
You gotta play somewhere, right?
Yeah.
So my concern, though, is June 8 would be a Thursday night. Does that interfere with school the next day or anything with cleaning up, getting the field ready?
No, I mean, we host nighttime events anyway.
If there's a game, there's a soccer game.
I know, but at that large, like what would be an expected crowd for an event like this?
It would depend on the two teams, but, you know, it could look like a Friday night football game. But what we would do, MIA is going to cover all costs, so we would make sure that we had custodians and DPW lined up to make sure that we can clean the facility, it's ready to go before and it's ready to go after.
And how's our lacrosse team doing? Do they have opportunities to play?
Lacrosse team's doing actually really well.
That's what I'm wondering, would they play possibly in this or would they put them in a different location?
This sounds like it's going to be further in the playoffs.
Yeah.
So if they keep winning, they could.
And what time would the game be? Where they don't know what the.
6:30, 7 o'clock? They haven't told us yet, but I'm just guessing.
But I'm just curious.
No, they're just, basically they're just trying to line fields up right now.
Do we have a police officer for soccer?
We do.
Yeah.
We would have a police officer for this.
They, MIA pays.
They'll even pay our staff.
So they'll.
Pay our staff.
Whatever the event staff that we feel we need, they're going to cover. But then they're also going to take the gate.
Yeah.
Whatever's left.
Cool.
But they won't pay us the crumple of three cents.
No.
Yeah, $60.
All right. Anything else?
I mean, I've got a young lacrosse player I think would be interested in attending, so, you know, I'm in favor of it. I think certainly if we did decide to do it, we should get the word out through the red department that this is going on, so we can get some young athletes out there to watch.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move that we allow the MIA to host lacrosse playoffs June 8, 9, and 10 here at ELHS.
Maybe one of the three.
Or, thank you.
There's a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries 4 to 1. Thank you. Moving along to 7.3, request from Lax Plus Organization to run the college recruitment tournament.
Okay, so this actually would fall under the direct.
So, surprise.
Okay, we can, we'll, go ahead.
So I'll move that we move 7.4 up to the next order of business.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay. The new proposed athletic rental rates.
Okay, in your package you have a sheet like this that gives you some comparisons of high schools around us in terms of what they're charging for their turf fields, for whether it be a practice or a game, or as we were just talking about, a playoff. What they also charge for the use of the lights, gymnasium, pool, tennis courts, and grass fields. If you look at the top there, you can see what our current charges are for the use of our fields are significantly lower than West Springfield, Minichog, and Holyoke, with West Springfield and Holyoke having turf fields. What the proposed increase is right now is sort of being halfway, since we do have renters that have been somewhat consistent over the years, not too many, but some, that we don't want to jump to the level that you're seeing sort of at West Springfield right now and at Holyoke, but move a decent portion of that way and see how we do in terms of rentals.
We felt we drew on a one-year pilot.
Yeah.
So I was just going to ask for assistance through the subcommittee.
It came through us.
I thought you were going to come back to us with the study, how it went, and maybe even looking at a provision to even make it more cost-effective compared to the other areas.
Yeah, I couldn't believe how much we were underpaying or undercharging, I should say.
It's been a while since this has been looked at.
Yeah.
How long it's been? I think 2011, 2012 was when the last time we looked at it.
So, am I reading this right, a soccer game would be $360, two hours with the lights on?
Yes.
Versus 300 now?
Yeah.
I think that's pretty good for a rental.
Well, we kind of, we kind of like agreed with the proposal of not jumping too much because if we increase it to this, we're still going to be under high schools.
No, exactly, you're going to lose people, right?
I think we were at the Mutiny game Saturday night, what a fantastic community event.
Right.
Hundreds of kids there and watching these.
Well, that's good to hear.
Young athletes playing. Yeah, so we love it.
Interestingly enough, the Lax Plus Organization was ready to cut a check no matter which prices we went.
Right, well, in the grand scheme, it's 40, you know, $40 difference, whatever. Whatever it is, so.
And this money will go into what account?
The money goes into, when we rent out the turf field and the athletic fields, it goes into the revolving account and we use it for the maintenance of the field. The hope would be if we can build consistent renters, that when it's time to at least resurface the track, we have enough money to do it from that account. Redoing the field is going to be pretty costly, and so I don't know that we would get to that level.
And then the other rental fees go towards the building?
Gymnasium and the pool, yeah, the building, each building has a rental account, and so that money goes into their rental account. And then you can use it to, if you're renting out the pool, a lot of times you're buying pool chemicals, and so you use it for that kind of thing.
Head on up. Sorry.
Maintenance of the building.
Yeah, we probably don't ever rent out the pool, right?
It's a little pool that could sometimes, too.
Can we really?
Sometimes, not a lot.
What about the tennis courts? Is there a history of rent?
Tennis courts, I don't think we've seen a lot of rentals, but now with the new courts, we may get more.
You might get more.
Yeah.
And then the grass fields, do we rent the fields often?
Only when the turf's spooked already.
Well, that's baseball.
Then another group may rent a grass field. There's an adult soccer.
I was going to say, is there adult sports games?
Oh, yeah? They pay this kind of money, the adult soccer?
They have not yet. They don't know, but this goes on July 1st.
They also have the baseball.
Tri-county.
Yeah.
So they pay the rental.
Per game?
Per game.
Right, or this is per hour?
Well, it's per hour.
Per hour.
So you figure a three-hour baseball game.
Right.
So.
So you're going from 30 to 60.
And actually, that one was a little bit, the recommendation was a little bit higher than that.
Really?
Yes. And we, you know.
Do other, I don't see any other comparable prices from other towns, they just don't give us those?
No. They don't have. All right.
Well, I make a motion to approve of the proposed athletic rental rates as a pilot for one year.
Starting July 1?
Effective July 1, 2017.
There's a second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Do we know the cost, the true cost of having those lights on per hour on the stadium?
We can get it through DPW.
I did study a long time.
Did you? Is it less than $50 an hour?
Oh, yeah, it absolutely is. You'd be surprised.
I would be surprised, yeah.
Those bulbs are very expensive, though.
The bulbs are, yeah.
They really are, yeah. You have to get the fire.
Well, so are we calculating that in?
No, actually, the whole maintenance is covered by the warranty.
Is it really? Yeah. I think the lights are separate, yeah.
They are. For how long does that have to run?
20 years.
Oh, it's 20 years?
I know.
And they monitor those?
Remember all the work we did with.
They monitor them from there.
I can tell.
They actually know when one of the lights is out faster than we know.
And they'll come out?
And they come out, they change it, let it snow, yeah.
Yeah, they're on.
By the year 18, I think maybe we ought to be having problems with all the light bulbs.
Get another 20.
I'm sure we'll be gone by then.
Are those on by right every night, the lights?
They're on a timer, so we can, via the timer in the computer, they can shut them down whenever you need them shut down.
Okay, because a lot of times I'll drive by and it's late and the tennis lights are on and the field lights are on.
Tennis lights is a manual timer.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so someone's been on there and they put it on for, say, an hour, it's going to run for the hour. Just the back, I think.
Okay.
The back courts. But the field lights are on a computer, we can do that by computer.
What time are those on, do we know?
Generally, we try to shut them down.
I thought during the fall, it's 8 o'clock on non-athletic events.
Often 8?
On non-athletic events, yeah.
No, I thought it was later.
I knew it had to be.
It was later.
Yeah.
I know, we discussed it in the vote, but we're holding our.
But it's like, it's like 10:30, 11 o'clock at this time of year that they stay on until?
I want to say that 10 o'clock is the last time it should be on.
But I think I've driven by later and.
The original vote, if I remember correctly, back in 2012 when we were looking at all this, was that up until Thanksgiving, you would keep them on to roughly 10 o'clock. And then Thanksgiving to March 15, when spring sports start, you would basically have a moratorium on them and then they would start up again.
Okay, that sounds about right. Is there anything else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, now circling back to the request from Lax Plus.
Okay, so the Lax Plus Organization is a youth lacrosse organization for young ladies from grades three all the way to really grade 11, because it's, a lot of it's in the summer and the fall. And what they're looking to do is something actually that we did do for the first time this fall in November, where they have a college recruitment tournament. And they really liked our site last year, they liked all our fields back here, but certainly the stadium field, so that as they're having that tournament, they can actually have some of the more premier games in the stadium. And they run it and they have up to 100 college coaches out here last fall. The only thing is that in order to do it and not conflict with many of the other fall things that are going on, they do it on a Sunday and they run it from 8:00 AM to about 5:00 PM with cleanup. The games don't generally run all the way to 5:00 PM, but cleanup and so forth. They do a nice job in terms of management of parking, management officials, keeping all of that well organized. It's simply that right now in our policy, we usually don't start events on Sundays until 1. So it's asking for a waiver of that for November 5.
What was the reasoning behind?
Churches.
I was just going to ask about the church.
We did send, I know Mr. McGee has sent an email to St. Michael's, we have not heard back. I'm assuming one date, but make sure that they're okay with it. One date in the fall. We're not looking to do it every Sunday. We're not looking to do it every Sunday.
Yeah.
One date in the fall.
Yeah, we're not.
Well, the, the idea is not necessarily the abuttingness of the church.
I mean, the games aren't going to go on next to the church, they're going to come stadium this way, but you will be starting somewhere in, early in the morning.
You've got P A system.
And you will have a, you know, you will have a parking lot that's full and busy.